Commissioner. Okay. Thank you and good evening and welcome to the January fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole. Our first agenda item this evening is to is a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole Meeting of December ten, twenty twenty, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. We will move from that to we have a couple of presentations this evening before we take public comment on agenda items. And the first presentation this evening is from our Abington Township Police Department Chief Pat Malloy, who is going to give us an update on the impact of the pandemic on policing, and I will turn it to Chief Malloy.
Thank you, Vice President Hecker and members of the board. I'm very grateful for this opportunity to brief you on not only the challenges that we faced as a result of the pandemic, the operational, and to review some of the anomalies in the police calls for service over the last several months, but also wanted to briefly go over some of the issues that we faced and challenges during the aftermath of George Floyd's murder and just express the gratitude to the community and the way that we came together, especially at the time when we're celebrating Martin Luther King's Day on Monday, the spirit of peace, peaceful protest. So that's basically going to be my outline. So can everybody hear me?
Yes, Chief Malloy.
Thank you. So again, if you recall, at the beginning of this pandemic, there were so many unknowns and we all went through this together. And my concern and the concern of the staff, the command staff, was how can we protect our officers? At that time, we were afraid of surfaces and how this would spread, and CDC guidelines and protocols were changing often. And the great work that was done by the township management, especially Tom McInnity and others supporting us during this challenging time was nothing short of remarkable. We changed things very quickly with remote reporting. Instead of going to homes like we normally do, we developed an online reporting system. We changed our response to medical calls. At the very beginning of this, we had officers who were in positions and exposed to COVID nineteen positive patients, but we didn't know that for three or four days later. And at the time, our officers weren't equipped with the proper masks and other protective PPEs. But if you look at a couple of those pictures there, just imagine officers live in the car. They turn their car over to the next shift, and we were daily fogging our vehicles. We learned that the gators were not as effective as surgical masks. And that other photo there is a mask that Tom McInnity and others were able to get for our officers so they would be better protected. And if you look at that number there, we used thirty five hundred hours quarantining officers who were either exposed at home or had close calls, but out of an abundance of caution, we kept them quarantined so we did not have impact on operations. I'm proud to say that because of the protocols and the diligence of the officers, we had no officer to officer transmission over this last several months. You can go on to the next slide. I listed those. There are no particular order, but when we analyzed our data, we saw an uptick in disputes, domestic violence, mental health, child custody calls doubled, child abuse calls decreased by over four hundred percent, and you may wonder why that is. Most of the reporters are those people who are guardians either in the schools or come in contact with children who are either showing signs of abuse or neglect. And because of the lockdown and the fact that many of the children were not in schools, we saw a dramatic decrease in those type of reports. The numbers were like forty on an average year, and we had six up until like December of this year. So those, we also had a number, we have a needy family fund with each year, we may help forty families. This past year, we were able to help seventy two families with payment for utilities or groceries. The Community Policing Division, and I know Commissioner Schreiber and others, they organized a food drive to help supplement the food cupboards in the township. But there was definitely a demand for more food, and I couldn't be more proud of the officers and the community, the firefighters and second alarmers who helped with that. Let me go to the next slide. So I put this slide up here as an illustration of the dramatic change from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. If you look at the chart, mental health related back in twenty nineteen and domestic related were two ninety one and three fifty. In twenty twenty, a dramatic increase of eight hundred and thirty seven calls for service and one thousand forty five at the end of the year. You could go to the next slide. So I just, I thought it was important because our social service professionals who have been really taxed over the last several months, I just wanted the board to know that when we go to a domestic incident, and we've been doing this for a number of years, we use a program called a lethality assessment program, which is basically a stool, a tool that has a multi-pronged intervention approach where we, it's evidence-based, and it's, it helps us ID domestic victims of domestic violence who may in the future be victims of an escalated violence. Or, for example, if there are red marks on the neck of the victim, that is an indicator that the abuser will increase the violence. And so there's an immediate need for us on location to connect these victims with our partners in the domestic violence women's support services. And we do that a number of times. Something that's not, most people do not know is when children witness domestic assaults, the trauma that they face and the duty that we have to on scene get intervention for them. And that happens quite often on a daily basis. So again, you go to the next slide. Thank you. Again, most of you know that we do operate the Social Services Hub. I just wanted to point out, although the cases on, in two thousand and, or twenty twenty appear to be a little lower than twenty nineteen, we did have some challenges in getting people in the room and meeting with our partners in the Social Services countywide. But if we go to the next slide, you'll see that we started a new program called The Bridge. In the last several months, we had police departments that border our township that joined our hub. We've been operating the hub since twenty fifteen, but we were able to include our partners because we see many of these cases, you know, cross township lines, and we were able to work collaboratively with our other partners in public safety. So if you look at the Bridge Program, this is a new program through some grant funding. We have a professional psychologist counselor from the county who works with our Community Policing Division on Tuesdays, and they identify calls for service where they need intervention. And if you can go to the next slide, we can, we could talk about the number of success stories that we have had. For example, when our partner comes in on Tuesdays, we would see a home or a family where we go out there eighteen to twenty times up into a certain point until we turn that case over to a social service worker, and we see a dramatic drop off in calls for service to zero in the last couple of months. I wanted to put in spikes in violence. There was a period that began sometime in June where we had a number of calls for service that were a spike in knife and use of weapons, guns. And it was in a short period of time where we had a violent domestic and a homicide, brutal stabbing at the Meadowbrook train station. We had a shooting on Rockwell Road, a murder-suicide at Meadowbrook Apartments. Several motors disputes where either guns were displayed or in some cases guns were fired. We had a four hundred block of Central Avenue. There was a shooting into an occupied home. Just recently, we had a fight, a dispute at the Willow Grove Mall with a gun, where a gun was used. But what we have seen, you know, some of these actors were, had a criminal history and were prone to this. Some were motivated because of emotional and past crimes of passion. But we also saw a spike in the number of people who are purchasing firearms nationwide. I think we had seventeen point five million background checks for gun purchases. And the last spike, I think, was back in twenty sixteen when it was over fifteen million. So again, we think that was a contributing factor. But I just wanted to point those out because they were a short period of time and they represented a spike in violent crimes, especially when we live only five, if you think about the number of violent crimes we have, it's still relatively small compared to the crimes that, you know, Philadelphia is experiencing or has experienced over the last year. You can go to the next one. I wanted to pivot a little bit here to, I thought it would be important for me to go over the George Floyds, the impact of George Floyd on policing, the peaceful protests that we have seen in Abington Township. For example, we had seventeen peaceful protests that were planned and organized. And the one that you see on the left where the officers were kneeling, you know, in solidarity with our students and people from all backgrounds in our community, just remembering the George Floyd and the nine minutes that the officer knelt on his neck. I can tell you that when we planned that, it was successful because the student organizers met with our lieutenant, met with our command staff, and it was over six hundred people were there. And I know Commissioner Spiegelman and others from the community were there. It was really a night that made you very proud to be a police officer in Abington and proud of our community. There were other planned demonstrations, seventeen in all, and I could tell you not one demonstration resulted in any acts of violence, in any destruction of property. You see my officers on the right there engaged with the community. It wasn't always peaceful. There were so, always in it, sometimes an exchange. But what I learned is our officers were there out of mutual respect, a spirit of cooperation. We were able to listen to these young people, and if you can go to the next slide. We were able to listen to these young people, and you'll see later some of the things that we have done as a result of that. And again, we did have, and this is especially important today, although it's obviously a whole different scale with the civil unrest that we are seeing now in our nation. But I wanted to put this slide up because, you know, we routinely communicate with the FBI and other partners in gaining intelligence about possible rioting or looting or destruction of property. And I couldn't be more proud of the work that our officers did, our command staff and supervisor in organizing our response to very credible threats of looting at our mall, at our Target. If it weren't for the great preparation that the officers did and the training and the procurement of equipment, Lieutenant Porter and others, we were able to outfit people with their riot gear and protective gear. We activated what is known as a mutual aid response where our officers were prepared and we did respond to Philadelphia. We respond to Shelton Hill Square Mall. We responded to the King of Prussia and Upper Marion. It is just because of the collaboration and communication and preparation, I couldn't be more proud of the way we responded to all of those. And in many cases, the actors showed up. They were met by officers. We would watch them text on the phone or communicate with others who would be coming up here to do some damage and called it off. So I just wanted that you know that screen. Coming up to this weekend, we are being briefed on things. I'm happy to report at this point, there's no credible threats for any targets in Abington. But I would, I just want to reassure you that we are well-prepared to deal with any threats because of the, our cooperation with the county. So as a result of these peaceful protests, the national calls for reform, we immediately looked at all of our policies and procedures. While we never condoned chokeholds and never trained in chokeholds, we looked at our policies and we explicitly put in our use of force and we banned and prohibited chokeholds before this was mandated. A duty to intervene, we saw on the George Floyd where there were officers just standing around. While we have an oath where we would not allow that as, whether you're a rookie officer, first day on the job, or a senior officer, we created a new policy and trained on duty to intervene for cases just like that. Brianna Taylor, no-knock warrants. This comes up very often. In Abington, we do not have, in Pennsylvania, no-knock warrants. We have a very, very diligent group of trained commanders and supervisors who are on our SWAT team that fill out risk assessments. This goes up and down the chain of command. And if it meets a certain benchmark, then it would be a warrant service at a home, but never results in a no-knock, no-knock warrant. I put less lethal weapons there because across our country, we have seen countless incidents of officers and one back in Philadelphia not too long ago with Walter Wallace, had a knife, was emotionally disturbed, coming after the officers. They use lethal force. In that scenario, they did not have tasers. We expanded our less lethal weapons program to include less lethal shotguns that almost all of our officers have access to for those very calls for service. We did de-escalation training, fair and impartial policing training, implicit bias training. And we had to do a lot of this remotely, given the challenges of the pandemic. There also was a call for a database of officers who should not be in this business. I'm proud to say that our hiring process and our polygraphs and our FTO program, we have relied on that for a long time, and that has been effective. But we signed on with Josh Shapiro, the Attorney General, and others. And then one other thing that comes up a lot, often are officers' health and welfare and mental wellness. As an organization for a number of years, if an officer is exposed to any trauma, we mandate that they see the psychologist. And moreover, we have something called an early warning system. If an officer is a subject of a citizen's complaint, been involved in a pursuit or otherwise used force, it would trigger an administrative review where we would have that officer in and review to see if he does need intervention, he or she, I should say. This next slide, transparency, trust, and accountability. We immediately saw an opportunity to put all of our policies and procedures on our website. As you know, we are an accredited agency since two thousand and three, nationally and state accredited, one of only six agencies in the entire state that meet that standard. While we were proud of all of our policies and procedures, and we know that we've been doing things, you know, very well, we've been looking for ways to improve. We also know that some people do not want to, or trust the police and do not want to come to the police department to file a complaint. We made that more prominent on our website, how to complain against a police officer, and frankly, how to commend a police officer. We reviewed and posted statistical data based on race and other characteristics so the public understood our breakdown on crimes and car stops. And I can tell you, back in nineteen ninety eight, we were recording on our written citations the race of the individual we stopped, the reason, the probable cause for stopping that individual, and the sex. And we were doing that for a number of years because we were so sensitive, you know, to the idea of racial profiling and the disparities that exist in policing. I'm also, when I talk about our NAACP program, we had meetings with Pastor Coleman, Pastor Mitchell, Commissioner Schreiber, and others to talk about things that we were doing in policing. And, you know, we talked about this movie, Walking While Black, Love Is The Answer. I'm proud to tell you that most of my department has seen that, and everybody's required to see this movie, sworn and civilian, and will be facilitating a discussion about this movie, which is a great movie. And it's really good for all of our officers to see. We have brought in our president of our NAACP, and we shared statistical data, data on citizen complaints. We've had complaints, and we were able to show the pastor and others the body camera footage and get feedback from them. So proud of that relationship and how it has been very helpful for us to meet some of the needs of the reforms that people are requesting, you know, just in our community and throughout the nation. And I just threw that last slide up there, just to illustrate, and I was cramped, my hand in the number of thank you letters that I had to sign from the spring all the way through the holidays. There were people that would show up with food. Pastor Mitchell and Saint Baptist Church invited us and had a home-cooked southern meal. You see Commissioner Schreiber there and Commissioner Peggy Myers. We had people that were donating masks and equipment. It's just heartwarming to know that despite all the challenges, we are so grateful for the support that we received, not only by the township manager and the elected officials and the community, but so many others even outside our community that came to drop off, we told their equipment to make masks, for example, and just to make our officers and keep them safe. So I know I rushed through that and covered a lot. I have numbers and data statistics. If you need them, I will share them. But I wanted to at least put that information out there and open it up. Vice President Hecker, if you have any questions or would you like me to comment on anything else?
Thank you, Chief Malloy. I know I speak on behalf of my colleagues when we say, you know, we express our gratitude as a board to you, your command staff, and all of the members of the Abington Police Department for your work throughout this pandemic and always. I will open it up for any brief comments or questions for the chief. Given the magnitude of the agenda in front of us, I do want to keep that brief. And if there are substantive follow-ups to be had, I'm sure we can make arrangements for that to occur. So do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? And I see Commissioner Schreiber has her hand up, so I will turn the floor to her.
Thank you. Now, I wanted to thank the chief for putting this together. It was very thorough yet concise. I think each of these slides probably could have been their own, you know, hour-long workshop where you really kind of did a deeper dive. So to put this into, you know, I guess it was about ten minutes was excellent. You covered a lot. I really appreciate it and all the work of all of your officers. I did want to just say that some of it, when I had reviewed this before and, you know, seeing it again now, is disturbing, some of the things that came up as far as like the child abuse numbers, you know, that that they have gone down for probably not a good reason. Not because child abuse has gone away, but because, you know, they're not being reported in the same way. So that's sort of the negative side. The positive side is that I think everybody might not be aware that programs like the hub are being repeated by other groups now. So other departments often copy what we do here. So I think that's, you know, to be commended. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner Vaughn?
I just want to say thank you because as a new commissioner, you have answered any questions, any text messages, anything, issues that arose that were brought to my attention and my word. You were very kind and always willing to answer questions for me and to help me out and to listen to things that my constituents or myself may have said, heard, or felt. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Vaughn. Commissioner Ball?
I promised Vice President Hecker I'd be brief. I also wanted to say thank you, and I wanted to say thank you for maybe a slightly different reason. I think that the public might not realize how many hard conversations that Chief Malloy and Deputy Chief Warner and their staff had to, not had to have, were willing to have and were open to having in the wake of George Floyd's murder. There were a lot of really hard questions that were being asked nationally, and our township was not immune to those questions. They're good questions, and frankly, they're ongoing questions. And the instinct to be transparent, I think, lessen the need to go so deep with a lot of those questions that some of us thought we were going to have to explore and we're going to be sort of proverbial rabbit holes. And I just wanted to publicly thank Chief Malloy in particular for his willingness to make time to have those questions in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of a lot of tense national conversation. And there was never a moment at which he was placating or avoiding those conversations or trying to give an answer so that we could move on. He was absolutely willing to have robust conversations about really hard issues. And I just think it speaks to his character and that of all the men and women who work for him. So I am really proud to be an Abington resident tonight, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Ball. Commissioner Rothman?
Sorry, tech issues there, fat fingers or something like John always says. I just want to say, I really appreciate the part, Chief Malloy, where you talked about that there's always more to improve on. The acknowledgement of that. While what you said and what you presented and what the team has done over the course of the year is amazing, astounding, and we're all grateful for it. There are always ways that we can continue to learn, not necessarily get better at things, but continue to learn. And so I just really wanted to thank you for that, and thank you to everybody that's supported the police, that's had the hard conversations, that's challenged the police department. Really, that's the way that we can all get better. And so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of the others before me, and I wanted to extend a special thanks to Chief Malloy and your team for coming to Ward Six back at the end of October and screening Walking While Black, Love Is The Answer with the residents of this area, fielding questions from the residents that attended, and, you know, handling a pretty difficult conversation at times and handling it with kindness, dignity, and compassion that you always seem to extend to all the commissioners on this board and everyone in this township. So again, just thank you for going above and beyond all the time for us and our community, and thanks for coming out for Ward Six. And thanks for all that you do for us.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And thank you again, Chief Malloy, for the overview this evening. We appreciate your time and the information that you've provided.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Our next item of business this evening actually was to be a comprehensive plan update by Michael Narkovich. But we are going to move that to the February meeting, so that will not occur this evening. And we will move on to Item C, which is a brief update on the Clean Energy Transition Plan, the Climate Action Plan, and the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative. And I'm going to call upon Ward One resident and longtime township volunteer, Kaki Evans. Kaki?
Good evening, commissioners and community. Am I able to share my screen?
Yes, you are.
So first of all, I want to start by thanking the commissioners and the township staff on the wonderful support that you've been giving us, especially during this pandemic. We've asked for a lot of data, and it's been terrific. Our presentation tonight, I want to briefly go over that, the charges of our Environmental Advisory Council, and we are certainly recommending tonight. And just to give you some background in the community, a year ago in June two thousand and nineteen, the board unanimously passed a Ready for One Hundred Resolution. These are the three goals. You're really striving. And the resolution states that the Township Environmental Advisory Council, within a year of the resolution, would create an energy transition plan. We haven't done that, but we have good news tonight. So the purpose of our meeting, of our presentation, is to inform how the Energy Transition Plan, the Climate Action Plan, and the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative are essential to the three goals of the Ready for One Hundred Resolution. We want to consult with you all, the board, that to reckon- That to recognize that your role as key decision makers and how to solicit your priorities in developing the first phase, which is focusing on municipal operations. Of our Clean Energy Transition Plan. We also want to inform and consult the Board of Commissioners and the community. To have widespread community engagement to develop a climate action plan. Because we have some deadlines and that means we're starting this spring. Just to give some background, the Energy Transition Plan, since July, we have convened a team of. Five EACers. We call it the Abington Clean Energy Plan Team, and acronym is ACCEPT. So we want the community and the Board to accept. And we've been training diligently to create both a municipal and community plan through the Department of Energy Strategic Community Energy Plan Process. The first phase is focusing on municipal operations to reduce operating costs. Energy and fleet procurement, efficiency gains, and renewable energy options. And the second phase, we want to leverage the township as leading by example. You know, from lessons learned during the first phase, when we go on to create the community wide Clean Energy Plan. This is a pictorial process of the Department of Energy's, all the pieces. And specifically, you know, to form a leadership team is the first part. So we've completed most of the training. And it was a virtual training by habitus. You know, we're at the part now of identifying key decision makers and key stakeholders. So for the municipal part, that means working with township staff, of course, but really, we need to engage each and every one of you as key decision makers. So we can go on to have our vision, our energy profile, and all the other components. The phase of it is that what we're at right now is we want to get your feedback in order to be able to properly rank and prioritize. By looking at our energy profile from the data that we've been given to create our goals and priorities. And we also want to establish priorities based on the important criteria weighted by consensus and to have ongoing dialogue. So here's a chart of the milestones. I will say that the Clean Energy Planning Series that we're doing, and there's lots of assignments. We've learned so much about solar. We've learned. We haven't been trained in micro grids yet, but we're getting there. But it ends the first week in May, and actually. Townships are being asked to submit their plan by early March. So, you know, we really want to. We may not get there, but we want to be able to do this. So I wanted to just give you one level, you know, in our goals, Ready For 100 goals. I think the most challenging one is to transition our township fleet by 2030 to electric vehicles. This is not easy. But I want to show you benefit of another township. For instance, looking at, you can see like an electric vehicle. You know, here has an 85 mile per gallon versus 17 mile per gallons. So I'm not going to, you know, get into the weeds with you all. But the savings are significant. And looking at this fleet, for instance, they selected through this process. 11 different vehicles of their total township out of, you know, 25 vehicles. And the savings projected is going to be 93, over $9,300 a year. But wait, there's more. So I'm going to transition to the Climate Action Plan. And Pennsylvania has a Climate Action Plan. That was in 2018. And these are the recommendations. And so by creating a clean energy plan. We can really get into some of these energy management of our facilities, using something called Energy Portfolio Manager to see when something's. Not going right. For instance, years ago, our library had a new heating system put in, but through Energy Star, they were able to recognize. That something wasn't right with this brand new heating system. So we want to, you know, start using these tools across the entire township. And with the Climate Action Plan, we were selected, Abington Township, as one of 20 communities for the Department of Environmental Protection's Energy Office for the Local Climate Action Program. Which gives us technical assistance and we have a Drexel student working with us. She's wonderful. We, the Drexel student with us, completed a 2018 greenhouse gas inventory. So we know from a community perspective, not only from a township perspective, where our energy use is using, is going. And we also are asking, our ask tonight, the other ask, is we want to inform the Board of Commissioners. And their constituents for widespread community engagement to successfully develop our Climate Action Plan. And a Climate Action Plan basically is a comprehensive roadmap to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. But increase our adaptation and resilience to climate change, because what's our biggest problem? It's flooding. And we want to have the benefits, the economic, environmental, and social benefits. And this is a sample strategy. This comes from Bethlehem, which is. Just completed their Climate Action Plan. These are, they decided to split into, after engaging the community, these six key areas. And also, you know, identify the at-risk populations. This is a timeframe, so it's very timely. But, you know, this month and next month, we want to develop a task force. We want to develop the community engagement strategy. The vulnerability assessment, some of this has been actually been happening because the EAC every year since 2016. Has been submitting a environmental assessment to a international group. And we want to have actually three workshops, but we want to, you know, develop and model the mitigation, the adaptation. We want to finalize it and we want to, you know, present it to you in order to adopt a Climate Action Plan. And this is an example of one of the tools that we have. There are community goals. I'm not going to open up each of these tabs. The vulnerability assessment, as I discussed, community engagement, there's an equity screen. Different, all the different groups that we have to work with. So we want to have partnerships, you know, with the school district, with the. Healthcare agencies. And we are very well positioned because if you recall, we completed a 2016. Star Assessment where we got to work with stakeholders back then, elected officials and businesses such as Briner Chevrolet. He was wonderful. He installed an extra charging station. To improve our access for electric vehicles. And these are some of the things that we want to ask the community. You know, such as, you know, creating jobs, saving energy costs, addressing climate change in a systemic way. But wait, there's more. So I'm going to transition now to the Greenhouse Gas Initiative. And about the need for Pennsylvania to join REGI. This is our region, and you can see that Pennsylvania is the only state that hasn't joined. And this is really important because the electricity sector is the second leading source of greenhouse gas emissions in Pennsylvania. And since REGI, these REGI states that are already participating since 2005 have reduced their. Their carbon pollution by 45%, you know, among other statistics. So David Letterman has told me that the top 10 reasons to join REGI are, as I said before, there was this study done by the Acacia Center. And that the states have joined have reduced carbon pollution by 45% in the 12 years. That's outpacing the rest of the country by 90%. Reasons three and four is that it's projected that by 2030, $2 billion will be injected into our economy, 27,000 new jobs. And also, the health benefits of reducing 30,000 hospital visits, you know. And if you talk to emergency room workers, doctors, I've attended presentations. The increase of childhood asthma has gone up astronomically because greenhouse gas emissions are really bad for breathing. And today, you may not have known, but today was a Code Orange Day early this morning in Montgomery County, and that doesn't happen too often. I also want to emphasize the need for social equity and fairness. Dirty power plants are almost always built in low income areas that are disproportionately. You know, where people of color live. And the electricity, we have to recognize that the electricity in our homes hurts others. Who can't readily get out of harm's way of these dirty power plants. And REGI, while it doesn't solve the problem of environmental racism, it does make a difference. And it takes on important, you know, important social justice. Reasons eight, nine are, you know, by having a clean energy grid, this will really help us realize. The goals of our Clean Energy and our Climate Action Plan. And lastly. The Pennsylvania is the fifth highest state emitter of greenhouse gas emissions in. The country. So I want to thank you all very much this evening for giving us the opportunity to take Abington to sustainability and beyond. And at this point, I'm going to pause and ask for questions.
Are there any comments or questions from board members for Kaki? Commissioner Schreiber.
We also have on the call, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Jim Webb, the Chair of our Environmental Council, and John Sorrentino is also here as subject matter experts.
Thank you.
So thank you for a good presentation. It was really interesting and comical at times. So thank you for that, too. The, you mentioned the STARS program. The, is this. Like connected to that in some way? Because I remember when we went through that program, or is this. Does this lead, like, does this help that? Or is that?
Yes. And let me say this. So our EAC from Sustainability, we three initiatives. One is the, the two that I, the. The Climate Action Plan as well as the Clean Energy Plan. We also got a grant earlier in 2020. STARS has become part of the U.S. Green Building Council's Lead for Cities Program. We got a scholarship for that. And so by accomplishing these two milestones, that will really position us. For the Lead for City certification that's due at the end of this year. So that's, so, you know, STARS has helped us. We know our weaknesses, our weaknesses. You know, in terms of we need to do renewable energy and these type of things. And, you know, thank you for your question. Hope it answers it.
Yeah, it did. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Are there any further comments or questions from members of the board?
So I don't think I mentioned strong enough just to close that we will be doing, we're going to be reaching out to you for surveys. We're going to be reaching out to you for one-on-one interviews. We would love you all to be champions, or if one of you particularly wants to be champions. And, you know, since I believe public comment comes after this, I guess you'll go over the procedure for that. And thank you again so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Kaki. We appreciate your service. So with that, we are going to move to public comment period. I'll remind folks who are here and for those who will hear this. At a later date, at the Committee of the Whole, the public comment period is up to five minutes on agenda items. And with that, I will look to see if anyone in the audience has their hand raised. And Ashley, if you could let Ms. Lehman in.
I mean, your devices are, I've unmuted you. You'll have to unmute your device.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, you know, once again, you allowed, after I spoke, for Mr. Manfredi to say things that weren't true.
Ms. Lehman, I'm going to stop. I'm going to stop you. I'm going to stop you right here.
Meeting.
This meeting, the public comment period at this meeting is for agenda items only. If you have comments on the agenda items, I will allow them. Otherwise, I'm not going to allow this to go forward.
So at any time that you that you turn off someone's mic after they make comments on agenda items or anything.
Ms. Lehman, the comment period here is for the agenda items to follow. If you have comments about those, I urge you to make those. Otherwise, your comment period will be ended.
Okay, so that is, that is about that. And also, I'm telling you that in the. Course of the thing, we again have five minutes to speak on what you're going to consider and discuss. We have no idea what that is for the ordinance to create Chapter 130 residential rental license permits. We have no idea where you're going to end up. And our comments should come after you decide what you're going to do. And we tell you how we feel about that and before the vote, before any vote to move it on or to move it forward. So like, the only comment I can make is do not move this on, okay? We have a history in Abington of absolute abuse. Of code violations and by public officials who knew that these codes were being violated. Two Commissioners lived in those buildings that were in those conditions. And on Mr. Spiegelman's watch, when he was in one of them, somebody died. And was burned to a crisp. So we literally do not have the ability to get involved in residential license permits. And no discussion has yet come before us that shows our liability when you inspect something. And it turns out perhaps that you inspected it faulty, as they did at many of the apartment buildings, especially the Colonnade. Your liability is through the roof. Consider Baderwood Residential Partners is one of the seven items that we have five minutes to speak on. So less than one minute per item. Again, a violation of the Sunshine Law. But the Baderwood Residential Partners building on the eight acres in the back was designed, and I think it's coming to land development now. So that fire trucks could not get around the whole thing. Who allowed that? And those same people are going to be putting in the residential rental license permits and making sure things are all according to code. We're actually even allowing people to bring in designs that are nowhere near reasonable. And there were some other stories about that one as well. So and I would like to say, I was cut off completely. From the first meeting, the TT.
So Ms. Lehman, you've made that point twice now, and this comment period is.
One minute to comment on something that's very important.
The comment period this evening is for the items on the agenda. And I'm going to urge you. Careful with your facts, because earlier in your comments, you made a comment about Commissioner Spiegelman, about something happening on his watch. When President Spiegelman lived in that building a decade before he became a member of the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, he did.
So we're not going down that path. I'm correcting the record. You may continue. You may continue with your comments.
That's my point. You can't undo my comments and then not allow me to say what the truth is. What you just said is not true.
It is absolutely true. I'm going to urge you to go on to further comments, or we're going to end this period right now.
Okay, so my comment about that particular issue is that when Mr. Spiegelman lived there, which was a decade or more ago. That he knew the conditions, but when the residents came before him and sought relief, he didn't help them. That is absolutely a crucial issue with the rental ordinance. We, and we have engineers that were just an engineering firm that we chose that was involved in racketeering. I, it is very, very important that we not get ourselves in this particular, the tenants need help. This is not the way to do it.
Your point is noted.
Thank you. And I would like, right now, just to say, according to the Sunshine Law, I would like to bring up a perceived violation. Which is that seven items and five minutes, less than one minute per item, is not reasonable. The township has decided three minutes is reasonable. This is not reasonable.
Your perspective is noted.
Mr. President Hecker.
Yes, President Spiegelman.
This, and for the record, I will not be making a habit of this, and it's part of my New Year's resolution to always stay very calm and professional. I just. Wanted to thank you for correcting the record. And I want, I would like it noted, as you said, I lived in the Colonnade. Even before it was the Colonnade, it was the Benson when I first moved in. I lived there for seven years. That concluded. A decade before I joined the Board of Commissioners. And what the caller said, particularly regarding someone being burned to a crisp there. And my knowing about conditions is 100%. It's untrue. I don't know if it's something the caller believes. And it's just stating something untrue or knows to be a lie. I can't say that, but it's completely untrue. Thank you for your assistance in correcting the record.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Ashley, you can bring in Mr. Drabing.
Mr. Drabing, your microphone is unmuted. You'll just have to unmute on your device. There you go.
All right. Okay, thank. The township and what they're doing, you know, as far as residential. Issues are concerned, you should be much more willing to just listen to people and to understand what they're saying. And also. I know that what Mr. Manfredi said is not true. We have tried many times to get things from him. And a manager who continues to tell, to mislead their residents shouldn't continue to have a position serving the residents.
Do you have comments on the agenda for this evening? That is what this comment period is about. That is what we will entertain here. And I urge you to get to any comments you have related to the three items before the Board this evening.
Well, also, you've had, you have a lot of issues tonight. Well, also, you've had, you have a lot of issues tonight that were not brought, you know, we're not given to the residents with an opportunity to discuss them. And, and, you know, that's, that's unacceptable.
Mr. Draven, you're being given five minutes here to discuss the items before the board, and you haven't gotten to one of them yet. I urge you to do so.
Well, that's, that's what I wanted to say. I, I think a law should be instituted with stiff penalty for anyone who does not tell the truth to the residents of this township. I'm disappointed in them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ashley, the next resident who would like to be heard is LaDon Marsh.
Mr. Marsh, your microphone has been unmuted.
Thank you. I'm, I'm speaking to Ms. Evans and, and Kaki and her initiatives that are there. Having spoken with, having a long discussion with Pastor Mitchell, I believe Salem Baptist Church will be happy to support the initiatives recommend from the Board of Commissioners that the Clean Energy Plan for the township, the Transition Plan be implemented. Also, the Climate Action Plan, the Local Climate Action Plan, we would wholeheartedly support that at Salem. I also would want to thank Chief Loy for coming to Salem. I think it's extremely important that we stay active with our local police force and that we engage with them. And we'd be, we are happy to have Powell on our premises and look forward to them returning as quickly as possible when we get to some semblance of nor, of normal. Given that, I yield my time back to the Chair.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Ashley, the next resident who wishes to speak is Roberta Brunner.
Hello. Thank you for giving me the chance to comment.
Yeah, good evening.
I, I'm a former resident of Abington Township, but I'm really addressing this now because I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Abington, Sheldonham, Jenkintown. And this is certainly something that we support in our mission. And I recommend that the Board support joining Reggie. And I want to thank Kaki for her very detailed presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Mr. Henry Geier.
Thank you very much, Vice President Hecker. I, I just came on this meeting as a private citizen tonight. I know some of you know I'm involved in other places and volunteering in the township. But I came as a private citizen to look at Ms. Evans' comprehensive plan, or the Transition Plan, rather, and I think it's very good. I really appreciate, appreciate everything the, our Environmental Advisory Council has done. And it's something I think our commissioners should really take a good, hard look at and consider adopting this. And about a couple callers ago, they, they were complaining about procedural and as far as I'm concerned, they were not procedurally following procedures according to this agenda. So, thank you very much for your time and Kaki, your presentation, and thank you to the commissioners and everyone else. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Geier. Next up is Mary Felley.
Hi, I'd like to, I'm an Abington resident, and I would like to thank the Environmental Advisory Council for their work. I'm encouraged to see that Abington is considering a climate action plan, that something is in the works. And I'm definitely urge the commissioners to sign a letter of support for Pennsylvania to join Reggie. There's almost nothing more important on our state's agenda, national agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Ayanna Laney Martin.
Hi, yes, I'm calling as a resident and also a member of the World Growth NAACP. And I'm calling in support of getting the commissioners to support the Transition Plan and Climate Action Plan. I think it's a very good a very good plan for the commission, the commissioners to support. And I hope that they do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And we have one final resident who has his hand raised, Kenneth. And I won't, I don't want to bungle your last name, so I'll ask you how you pronounce it.
Fine hour.
Thank you, sir.
First of all, I want to thank the commissioners for their.
Oh, you're back on mute, sir. There you go.
I think I might have tried to unmute him. Mr. Brunner, if you could unmute your device.
Got it.
There you go.
I apologize.
Can you hear me now?
We can, sir.
Okay. I want to thank the police chief for the time and effort he, he put into the last year and the challenges that he so ably has dealt with. And also, I want to commend the, the commissioners for making it a priority to look at climate change and to the work of the EAC as they develop a clean energy transition plan. And continue to have Abington be a leader within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And to Kathy for her hard, Kaki for her hard work. And again, support for the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, simply because CO2 is, is the issue when it comes to climate change. So, thank you again for your time and your effort, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments this evening, sir. Okay, seeing that we have no further comments, public comments, we will move on to unfinished business for the Committee of the Whole. And the first item this evening is to consider and discuss an ordinance to create and enact Chapter 130 residential rental license permits. And I'm going to turn to Commissioner Thompson to provide us an update on what next steps are.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. Tonight, I will be making a motion to table this item. Over the past several weeks, we've been meeting with the Solicitor's Office, the Fire Marshal, and getting feedback from various stakeholders within the township. Two days ago, we spoke with the Fire Marshal and the Solicitor, and we adjusted some of the language. That language has not made it to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration this evening. So, that alone, I think, makes it worth tabling this item until we're able to get that language updated and recirculated. But also, due to the amount of public feedback that we've received this week, I think it behooves us to take a look at that and respond to those commenters and make sure that we are addressing the needs and concerns that they have. So, I will make a motion to table this item tonight.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second to, to table this matter?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions for Commissioner Thompson? Oh, hold on, I got to move. One hand is up. Commissioner Carswell. You're on mute.
I'm lowering my hand before I forget. But I, I wanted to follow up just to say that I, I really appreciate the thought and energy that Commissioner Thompson has put into this and his interest to include more voices in the process. This originated, as we discussed a month ago, with the idea of protecting residents. And I don't think anyone on this board disagrees with the desire to protect our residents. I think this is also a process that deserves more attention and, and folks involved. I, I had some good conversations with people who reached out to me, and I appreciate the hard work that will go into doing this right. And I, I just want to thank Commissioner Thompson, because I know that he'll do that work.
Thank you, Commissioner Carswell. Any further comments from members of the board? Hearing none. With a motion and a second, I'll entertain a vote to table this matter. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion to table passes. We will move on to new business this evening. The first is Item A, where we will consider submitting a letter of support regarding the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, Reggie, to the Pennsylvania Environmental Quality Board. And I so move.
Second.
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 I see Commissioner Rothman has a comment or a question, so I will turn to Commissioner Rothman.
I just want to share, I think this is great. The, the certain dynamics of the future are bleak when we look at climate change. And there's a lot that we can do to help. I don't pretend to understand all of it. And in that regard, I just want to thank all those at the EAC and those that work with the EAC in, in sharing information and gathering information and everything along those lines. And, you know, I know that there are plans nationwide in the coming, in the very near future to take a, a deep look at, at green energy. And while there's a lot to be learned, I just wanted to thank Kaki and the team, and also to encourage all of us to not only support this now, but also to, to do what we can. I know we're all busy, but to do what we can to be part of it and the initiatives moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Commissioner Thompson.
You're on mute, Mike.
You're on mute, sir.
Mike, you're muted. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Kaki and the EAC for her presentation tonight and for giving us a background on what this initiative entails. And to also thank them for joining us at the Comprehensive Plan Table and their advice on, on, throughout that process, really. I, I wholeheartedly support this initiative. I think that it behooves us to really challenge ourselves as a township and as leaders to, to figure out how best to move our community and our environment into the future so that we have a future, well, an environment for our kids to inherit in the future. So, I am fully in favor of this, despite the challenges that may come with it. I think it's ultimately going to push us in a great direction moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. With no further questions or comments from members of the board, I will ask, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. This will move forward to the board. Item B under new business is for us to consider Baderwood Residential Partners LP Land Development Application. And I'm going to turn this over to Manager Manfredi to set the table.
Thank you, Vice President Hecker. As you, well, I candidly, I think the best way to set this table is to put this in the hands of Solicitor Clark, because he is the one who is most familiar with the long history of this. And he and I can address any of the more recent developments with it, but I think it's most appropriate for, for the Solicitor.
Okay, thank you. Solicitor Clark?
Can I pass it to someone?
It depends.
So, this project came before the Board more than a few years ago. This was the second phase of a project that began probably more than seven or eight years ago. And this was the residential component in the back of this property. I assume most of the commissioners are familiar with where this property is located. And this proposed residential portion of the development is in the back of the, the shopping center. The applicant first went through the conditional use process and was granted conditional use by the Board of Commissioners. And at that time, an issue was raised with regards to the subdivision and land development ordinance, the SALDO's requirement for a secondary access for fire protection. The applicant's plan originally showed only one access. And there was an attempt to secure a secondary access from a neighboring property. There was also some conversation regarding the township attempting to secure that secondary access from the neighboring property. And if there was any cost to the township, the applicant would have reimbursed us for any of our costs and expenses in acquiring that access. Ultimately, the Board declined to take the steps to acquire that secondary access for the property next door. And the applicant then engaged a fire safety expert who worked with our Fire Marshal, John Rohr. And Fire Marshal Rohr, in turn, worked with the Fire Chiefs to come up with a, a way to address the issue of needing a secondary access. It is my understanding, and I believe that you all have it, and based on some, some emails and some conversations with Fire Marshal Rohr, that what the applicant is now proposing has satisfied the Fire Marshal and has satisfied the Fire Chiefs, that the secondary access, while preferred, is not needed at this moment. The Fire Marshal has indicated he would like that we continue, and the applicant continues to try to secure a secondary access, because he thinks that would be the best situation. But the Fire Marshal is, and the Fire Chiefs are apparently not opposed to the waiver from the SALDO, which would have to be granted by the Board for a, the waiver of the requirement for a secondary access. So, this comes in front of you tonight on a land development application. The plans have been reviewed by the township engineer and all of the township consultants. All of the review letters have been issued. I believe all of you have the review letters. And now it is the time for the applicant will make a presentation tonight on this land development application. And ultimately, the main issue that is before you tonight, other than approving the land development, is whether or not to grant the waiver from the requirement of a secondary access.
Thank you, Solicitor Clark.
And the applicant is represented by, by Mark Kaplan, who is present this evening along with various members of the Baderwood Brandalini team.
Thank you. So, I suppose then, at this point, we would turn it over to the applicant, Mr. Kaplan, to provide a brief presentation to the board. Mr. Kaplan?
I'm here. I was having trouble hearing you, Mr. Hecker. Thank you. Well, Mike, Mike stole my, Mike stole about a tenth of my story. We could go back 10 years. But I guess there's no point in, in doing that. What Mike said is, is accurate. It really is a question of whether there is a requirement or there isn't a requirement. But when, when we received conditional use approval, we pointed out to the Board that the only way to get a secondary access was through Nobletown Plaza. Nobletown Plaza was owned by a REIT. And despite our efforts to get Nobletown Plaza to give us a very minor access easement, the former head of development and zoning officer tried to get it. We, we just couldn't get it, and we don't have the power of condemnation. There was a discussion, there's a resolution, and talked about the township possibly condemning this little sliver of inconsequential property so that we could connect. And as Mike said, when we came forward with our preliminary plans, fully engineered preliminary plans, we had recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission. The issue of the access showed up. We had multiple meetings with multiple more board members and the staff. And rather than fight about it, my clients, Fred Snow and Jim Bladels, we said, okay, let's try and find another way to satisfy the Fire Marshal and the Fire Chiefs. And we spent, I'm going to guess, best part of the year, we hired a consultant. There's a series of letters that you may have seen back and forth with the Fire Marshal. And ultimately, the Fire Consultant and the Fire Marshal, the Fire Chiefs agreed on the multiple changes that were suggested. And the Fire Marshal has quote, signed off. And the Fire Marshal has quote signed off in a series of emails. So we're here for approval. But there are some updates that you should know about. And I'm going to show a couple of drawings in a minute. So if I could have your IT people put up our our plan, a plan from a year ago. Now, that's the current plan. If you could put up the other one, yes. And if you could increase, well, I guess that, yeah, and but give me the street, give me. That's it. So this was the plan that went through the entire approval process and for which we received preliminary approval. And although it doesn't show on this drawing, in concert with the township manager, members of the former board, in order to solve existing problems along the fairway with people crossing over and not having any protection, we agreed to install two traffic lights, one in each of those boxes that you see on the fairway, one all the way to the left, which I guess is the west. And that would be where the traffic would come in that would go to the apartment project. And then over on the right side or the east side, we settled on the location where the pointer is now, leaving the parking lot in front of Whole Foods as it was because Whole Foods has a has the right to approve or disapprove any changes in the parking lot. At the time, we were dealing with one owner of the shopping center who did not want to involve itself with Whole Foods. And we worked our way through the best answer that we could get. And that would still give two accesses really crosswalks with a light, with lights in those locations. Now, if you could bring up the current plan and blow it up the same way, I'd appreciate it. Great. You blow it up a little bit. Thank you. So this is the same plan with a number of enhancements. On the left side, after discussions with the Fire Marshal, the engineer, the, that entrance and the accessway into the shopping center and into the apartments was refined. The access to the apartments was modified in order to grant access or to assure access to fire vehicles. And then the shopping center was sold. And the new owner was in agreement with the Brandalini team and Brian Keveney from Panone, that it would be better if we could move that or reconfigure the access going back to Whole Foods so that we would have a controlled access back there. And that's what you see on this plan. And as you see, there will be at our cost the installation of two traffic lights along the fairway, which are really precipitated, not because of the of our project wholly, but because there have been series of accidents along the fairway. And this was the consensus of all the professionals of the best way to correct the situation. So this is the current plan. This plan has been reviewed by the Township Engineer. We received a letter yesterday from John Tressler. I went through that letter. There are no major items. There are a couple of pages of really cleanup items for the engineers that we will comply with, will agree to comply with. And quite frankly, I think I've been involved in this project for 10 years. And so has Fred Snow and Jim Bladell and Adam Bonofsky and Matt Hammond, our traffic engineer. And we're, we're really pleased because from the point where we were fighting with the township about everything, we have been able to resolve everything. And I think everybody on the professional side of this is satisfied that this is a good project. It will improve the lighting, the parking lot. Well, it will finish the rehab of the Baderwood Center that Brandalini started when it owned it. And now, as a result of our agreements with the owners and our access easement, the parking lot, et cetera, will get a new face. So I have Matt Hammond, our traffic engineer. I have somebody, Mike Roth from Bowler. I have Jim Bladell, our construction manager, and Fred Snow, a president of Brandalini here. And we would be pleased to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, you know, after 10 months in a pandemic, you would think I would unmute myself before talking. So I will repeat what I just said to myself. And so we will open it up for Commissioner comments and questions. And given that this project is in Commissioner Weinberg's ward, I'm going to ask him to start.
Thank you, Commissioner Hacker. How's my sound?
I can hear you. Yeah.
Great. I'm just trying to understand what we're here about tonight. It seems to me, if I understand Mr. Kaplan properly, that there's a change in this plan, right? One is, I was aware of the waiver to the Saldow for the secondary access. But are you stating that there's, there are more changes to this? You talked about a review letter from Mr. Tressler? Is that what you mentioned?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Weinberg, we got it yesterday. The change, the change in this plan is to implement the comments of the fire people over on the left side or the west side. There's some tweaking of some aisles there. And the other is to over on the east side is to create that controlled lane going back to Whole Foods. I think it would help, Commissioner, if I asked the IT person, Maria, would you bring back the other plan that I had, we had up before? And then you'll be able to see the difference, Mr. Weinberg.
Yeah, I mean, just, I mean, I was provided with these diagrams before, but quite frankly, they're so small. I had no idea.
So.
If I could stop you a second, Mr. Kaplan.
Sure.
I mean, I would ask that whatever review letters you have, that it would be very important to me. I don't know the way the other board members feel, but I would love to see those review letters to know what we're actually looking at. I think it's important that the rest of the Board of Commissioners have an opportunity to look at it as well as the public. So I would ask you, to the extent that, you know, as quickly as you can to provide that to Mr. Manfredi.
Mr. Manfredi, the letter was directed to Mr. Manfredi. He has it. We both got it. Today's Thursday. I think we got it late Tuesday.
Okay, fair enough. It just, I just think it's something for, fair for everybody to be able to review.
No, no problem. It's, it's three or four pages, but you'll fall asleep reading what the comments are and will agree with them. But if I could bring you back to the drawing, just so you could see the, I don't even want to use the word major, but if you look where the driveway is on the east side, you'll see there's the box. That's an intersection where the light would be. And when you came in there or when you proposed to come in there, there was no change to the parking lot configuration because we didn't control the parking lot. That was, that's controlled by Whole Foods. And at the time, the then owner of the shopping center was not interested in asking Whole Foods to change the configuration. The new owner is enlightened. And Maria, if you can now change that drawing, you see the difference, Mr. Weinberg? It makes a whole heck of a lot more sense. We now have a controlled access into the shopping center on the east side. That was, that was the change. That was, quite frankly, what Brian Keveney, the Township's traffic engineer, had requested that we do a year ago when we reached agreement with, a year ago or more, Mr. Klein was involved. It was when Mr. Manfredi first came to the township. And we had an approval from the zoning hearing board. And we came in with our conditional use application. And without repeating all of the history, this was the plan that we all agreed was the best thing that could be done. So I think that what we're asking for tonight is for you to put this on an agenda next month. I believe that's what we're asking for. And I'm sure that when you read the review letter, I can't imagine you would have any questions from John's letter. So really, a lot of technical stuff.
And I, and I came into this hearing tonight thinking that the major issue was going to be that secondary access that you alluded to. In the conditional use hearing, I went back and saw that, you know, the secondary access was, was necessary. Looks like the Fire Marshal had said it was necessary, and it looks like there was just simple agreement by everybody that it was necessary. You stated that you went through the easement process. It didn't seem to, didn't seem to work out. And then perhaps a condemnation process that didn't work out. So what I'm trying to, I want the public to understand is that it looks like the fire, our Fire Marshal, or you had an expert that stated that, that it's okay not to have the easement. And I just want to make sure that we're all, that we're on the same page with, with this. Okay. So I think, I think you're right. My recommendation, and I realize you have your experts here now, I mean, my recommendation would be that, you know, we need to see these other documents and to find out what the experts are going to say, and perhaps Fire Marshal Rohr was going to say. And I think it's going to be important to get a sort of a full vetting, perhaps through the Land Use Committee. And that's what I'm thinking, that's what I'm thinking for now. I don't know if anybody else has any comments about this. I don't know how many times we want to, if we want to go through it tonight and land use or otherwise, but I welcome any other comments that people made.
May I give you, may I give you a little bit more information? It isn't that we convinced the Fire Marshal that the single access was okay. There is a very long series of letters of changes. We went out and we hired a fire consultant, issued a 10-page, seven-page, some long letter, had multiple dialogues with the Fire Marshal and agreed to a significant number of internal fire protection changes in the project. And it was only after months of going back and forth that the Fire Marshal said, look, we want you to continue to try and get the interconnection, which we will. But we are okay that you provided the necessary fire protection. And you have a, an email yesterday, well, there are multiple, there are multiple ones, but there's an email yesterday from Fire Marshal Rona saying he is satisfied. So we can do it any way you want, but we've, we've spent a year working with your staff to solve the problem as best possible. Look, we thought we had an agreement at conditional use that if we couldn't get the connection, and I, we went out, we got an appraisal of the cost, and the township elected not to use its power of condemnation. And we understand that. But if the only way to develop this property back there is with a, a secondary access, and we can't get the secondary access, and the township won't agree to help us with that, then we have a confrontational situation. And we tried to avoid that by bringing in a top flight fire protection guy. And he worked with, and he worked with the the fire people. And if you want us to go to the land development committee and bring Rona in and bring our experts, we'll be glad to do it because we've got, we've done every single thing we possibly can, but that's your call.
Right. Mr. Kaplan, but at the end of the day, in order to not have this secondary access would require a waiver of the Saldow. And, and nobody from Township staff can waive the Saldow. That's for the Board of Commissioners to do. Is that right?
Absolutely.
Right.
But there are, but there are standards.
Fair enough.
There are standards, and the standard is met here because it's physically impossible to meet the requirement. And we have done everything possible and have the incurrence of the Fire Marshal that this is safe, but.
Right.
Whatever you want, whatever you want to do, we just have to bring this to a conclusion.
So I see we're at 9:21. I don't know if any other, if, excuse me, Mr. Hacker, I don't know if any, I don't want to usurp your power here. I don't know if anybody else has any.
We have a number of hands up, so I think we should get through those and then decide on a course of action based on the feedback this evening. Next up will be Commissioner Vehi and then Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Brodsky, and Commissioner Speakelmann. Commissioner Vehi.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. I fully support referring this to land use. I sit on land use, and I'll prepare further questions for that time. And I just want to say right now that I find this rather annoying. This project seems to be just one request for relief after another. And I'm tired of hearing them and being forced to consider whether or not to grant them. So I'm going to need some, I'm going to need to be convinced because I am not convinced to grant this waiver. And the only reason why it's impossible to develop this parcel without a waiver is because your client purchased a lot that's landlocked. That's not our problem. So you need to prove to us why this is necessary. And I look forward to hearing your presentation next month.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehi. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Commissioner Hacker. I actually share Commissioner Vehi's frustrations on this. The Saldos is very clear that any building taller than three stories requires a second means of access onto the site. This building that we have in front of us is four stories and, you know, I could develop the site with two stories, although my performant may not work. Um, I have concerns that, you know, we may be kind of mixing our codes. Um, you know, I'm very aware that the international fire code only suggests two means of access to the site, um, and recommends them, but our SALDO does require them and we do have to, it, it really does fall to this board of commissioners to make a decision, a health, safety and welfare decision, um, about whether or not to grant that waiver and, and grant their relief requested by this particular developer on this project. I fully support moving this forward on to the land development committee for, uh, further vetting and I look forward to seeing Mr. Kaplan and his team at that meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Brodsky.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hacker, Hacker, excuse me. So I just want to briefly state, number one, I agree with Commissioner Weingrad that the board should see those letters of review and until those are provided, I would take no action until those are the opportunity for the board to review them, or at least Commissioner Weingrad can take a look at them and that can be discussed at a later time. I also want to say that I agree in part with Commissioner Vehe in that he's not in love with this and I echo their sentiments as well. I don't know that their referral to the land use committee quite yet is appropriate until we see those initial letter of review. So I would probably say just hold this for the committee the whole until next week and not even refer to land use until we can see what additional discoveries out there. So I agree with Commissioner Weingrad. I agree in part with Commissioner Vehe. He's spot on and I think is an analysis and we'll go from there. And I yield back my time to Commissioner Hacker.
Thank you, Commissioner Brodsky. Uh, President Spiegelman.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Hacker. Um, I do definitely see and respect the, um, uh, the argument that, uh, the position that, that, uh, Commissioner Brodsky, uh, just, uh, just stated. Um, I think, I think we, I, I think we can get those letters in time, um, uh, to, to go to land use, but, um, while I, I am sympathetic to, to Mr. Kaplan's position, I, I, I know how long this, this, this dance has taken. I've been certainly been there for pretty much the whole thing, uh, or a lot of it anyway. Um, but I know, I mean, if, if nothing else, some of these, some of these new changes, like the changes to the fairway, there's some very sort of hard fought, uh, safety upgrades. I know for myself, I'm going to need to, uh, some time to review those. So I think that the, I think that the most, uh, the most logical way forward for the greater good of everybody, including ultimately, uh, the, the applicant is in fact, if we bring this to, to a good, heavy drill down in land use committee and, uh, you know, see, see what we can get hammered out because I certainly, my, my fellow commissioners, uh, Commissioners Weingrad and Thompson and, and, and Vehe, uh, all make very cogent points. Thank you.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Commissioner Thompson, is your hand up again or did you not put it down?
No, my hand was up again. Um, I just wanted a point of clarification from Solicitor Clark on this. I know we have a pending deadline in front of us. Um, do you recall what that deadline is or when it is?
Mike, you're muted. With the, uh, amount of, uh, extensions that the applicant has given us, um, we are essentially out of extensions right now. So the understanding with the applicant was that they were to be put on tonight's agenda and then they would either be moved forward to the land use committee or to the full board for a vote. Uh, so one of those, and it doesn't seem like there's a desire to move it to the full board for a vote. So moving it to the land use committee, um, essentially has to happen this evening. Because as we discussed earlier, uh, with a land development application like this, an applicant has a right to be heard within the time limits. They have granted us, uh, multiple extensions while we have, well, extensions for the last year or so, where we have worked through these issues, um, and we're, we're, we're running out of time.
But we have enough time for the process to play itself out, to refer us to the committee and then the committee refer it aboard.
We have an understanding with the applicant that they would be heard tonight. Then they would either be referred to the land use committee or to the, the full, uh, full board for a vote. So yes, we have that time, uh, based on that understanding with the applicant, but we're, we don't have any more time after that.
Okay. And then I would ask, I guess, Commissioner Hacker and everyone else, uh, assuming this moves forward past, um, the committee level, are we kicking this back to committee of the whole or are we kicking it straight on to the board of commissioners?
Yeah, I was going to raise the same point, Commissioner Thompson. I, uh, my sense based on the solicitor's explanation, and Mike, you can certainly weigh in, is that the expectation is the vetting would take place at the land use committee and a decision would be made at that time about moving it forward to the full board for consideration, not coming back to the committee of the whole.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Okay. So seeing none, um, what we have here so far is expressed sentiment by those that have commented and I see Commissioner Weingrad would like to weigh in.
Now, I, I, cause I see, uh, Commissioner Bowman wants to weigh in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I, I, Commissioner Bowman, please weigh in.
Yeah, hi. I thought that, uh, we had heard from our, uh, fire commissioner way back when, when we were looking at this, as Mr. Kaplan said, and that he told us that as he, as he stated that with the, with the building as constructed, he could fight a fire there and that while he would like to have the access road, it was not necessary. I, I thought that's how Mr. War left it. Uh, but anyway, I'm sure we'll take that up at the land use. I certainly support moving into there.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. Is there anybody else whose hands are up that I cannot see? Okay. So with that, what we have, uh, is a sentiment expressed by the majority of those that have spoken this evening, uh, to move this matter to next month's land use committee meeting. And if we are to do that, then I, then we will need to entertain a motion and have a second in that regard.
Uh, so move, a motion, motion to, uh, motion to move this matter to the next land use committee.
Second.
Okay. With that, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hacker, is there a date?
I will defer to the township manager for the specific date.
Sure.
I can look it up.
I'm looking, I'm getting my calendar out. Hang on a second.
I'm sorry, I was muted. The, uh, it will be February 3rd.
You beat me to it.
February 3rd and then back to the full board.
Following.
On February 11th.
11th. Okay. I think we can, thank you, Mr. Kaplan and, and the colleagues that you brought with you this evening. Um, I think we can put the agenda back up on the screen. Thank you. And so our final, uh, item of new business this evening is for us to consider and discuss the approval of the Hunter Soccer Club land development application to construct new synthetic turf field at Penburn Park. And I again will turn to Manager Manfredi.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. As you know, some time ago, Mr. Manchester came into the Board of Commissioners and presented the idea of a turf field on and in the township park. They were given the go-ahead to proceed in this manner to go through the land development process. What we have in front of us this evening is that this is their formal land development application for this project. And I do believe that he has his representation, his engineers here. Mr. Manchester, I know you are here. If you'd want to talk a little bit more about where you've been, uh, with this project since you were to the board before, and then turn it over to you, your engineer, I believe, Ms. Baldwin, for the presentation of the plan. You're, you're muted, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Late night. All, everything, uh, from the Hunter standpoint, uh, obviously COVID, uh, it's just been a couple of months, but everything has been going through the county and township, waiting for all the results and, uh, most of it is all gone, I believe. And, uh, Liz, can we talk about that and answer any questions about the engineering? Uh, Liz, you're there?
I am here and I, I believe Hugh Caddzo is on, um,
You.
To, to do the presentation.
Yeah, it's, uh.
I, he's showing up as Elizabeth Baldwin, so.
Yeah, I, I get sent, I got sent Liz's link, so. Part of, I apologize for that. Okay, can, uh, can we share the screen?
Yes, I'm, I mean, the other Elizabeth, uh, to make you one now.
We have a hard limit on no more than two Elizabeth Baldwins at any committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, you should have the ability to share your screen now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I, I'm pretty sure most everyone on the board is familiar, uh, familiar with us, with the site. This is, uh, I'm just showing you the plan, plan views. Um, this is, this is existing conditions planned, just showing what, what's going to be, uh, demolished, uh, which is like the existing fence that's along here, et cetera. The work is going to be going on out to the road. And here is a layout plan. What you see, uh, this is primarily a youth field, so most all the, uh, it's, it's a more narrow, narrower size of synthetic turf in the fields, as you can see, are more youth sized, smaller fields. What you see is in the gray is actually a restoration of grass lawn area that is going in. There also be a, uh, there's a, existing concrete steps here, so there'll be a new pad there that'll allow access to the field. And what you see over here is a, is a combination, uh, it's a 10-foot wide by two miss access drive, uh, meeting with staff, what we're doing is, is that we're going to propose a chain and bollard fence across part of it. Uh, we've, you know, for the most part, most all pedestrian access will be coming up this way. But at the times, if someone needs access for service reasons or urgency reasons, this also will allow access for ambulance, et cetera, on it. And the next sheet is the grading in stormwater. Uh, we've, uh, the way, the way we're designing this, the field actually is, the existing slopes kind of go across the field diagonally. We're kind of following those. Uh, the stormwater system will be under the, under the field, like a stone pit area that will contain it and detain it and release it into a level spreader, which you see down here, which is, uh, uh, the discharger come on here and, and introduce it into a, a level spreading condition and with down the embankment. We are also collecting, uh, water, stormwater that currently runs off here and would go across the ball field over in this area because of the construction of the access drive. And these are, these are, uh, profiles of the same thing. This gives you an idea with the cross section of, this is, this is the store, the level spreader here, which again is located over here to see that's in order to disperse the water. And, uh, the other pipes are, are the standard slopes that we have, just to show you what we're dealing with. Currently, um, currently we have received, uh, received, uh, NPDS approval. I think that came the other day. Um, and, uh, we've, most all issues, the comments that we've had with the, uh, planning commissioner stuff have been met. There are some waivers put forth, a lot of it with, uh, because the situation with the parcel, uh, being a township parcel, the, the history of it, uh, and, and talking with staff and through our surveyors, there's literally hundreds of parcels that make this park up. Um, and apparently over the years, it has been attempts to try to survey, uh, do some type of lot survey for this. And it is apparently from a legal standpoint and from a surveying standpoint, quite confusing. Uh, so many of our waivers that we have requested were related to, uh, related to like surveying of like the entire park. Uh, again, the planning commission felt those were in line, uh, based off the history, uh, previously, uh, on, on the site. So that, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Uh, if there are any questions, like, you know, Bill's here, you know, myself, I'm the landscape architect on the project. Uh, Liz is the, uh, the other Liz is the, uh, project engineer.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner Thompson, as this project sits within your ward, do you have any comments or questions you'd like to make before I open it up to others?
Uh, no, nothing terribly specific. I am in full support of this project. I would like to see it move on hopefully to the, the full board meeting, um, in reviewing the, uh, the land development application. It's a, it's a solid application. Uh, I sat in on the planning commission meeting. It was pretty lackluster. There wasn't a whole lot to talk about. I do agree with their request for the waiver, um, on the site plan. Um, I don't know if anybody's looked at the tax parcel map for Penbridge Park, but it looks like a densely populated residential neighborhood. It's made up of hundreds of plots. And I, I, I do understand the, uh, the concern there. Um, but yeah, I, I fully support this project. I'd love to see it move forward and, um, I'm, I'm asking, uh, for your support tonight as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Vehe, I see you had your hand up. Did, did you have a comment or?
I, I had a question, which I figured out, so I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, other, other, Commissioner Weingrad.
Thank you. Um, did the township and Hunter ever, uh, sign that facility use license agreement that was discussed, it looks like in 2019?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and it looks like according to this agreement, this is township land, but Hunter is going to be able to build this turf field on it. Um, and I, I'm just, I, I don't know if this is an appropriate question, if it's not, tell me, but how are you paying for this?
Now, it's a good question. We're, we, we've raised the money, uh, we're getting bank loan and then when we look at the, uh, what we spend per year, we, we've probably spent close to 30 to 35,000 in the last two years just on the grass and the facility there, with the savings there. And then when we look at, uh, renting it out for the next six years, we, we feel very confident that we'll be able to pay back everything and, and we're, we're, we're signing off on that, on the loan. And, uh, we've raised both $300,000 already, so it's all already paid for and then, uh, pretty much done now, which, you know, start to dig it.
I, as I recall, I think the project was about 575,000. Does that, does that sound right?
It's, uh, 640.
640, okay. But you have, and you have the funds to start building basically?
Yeah, we've already, we've already given Turf Nation, uh, close to $100,000. Uh, and then I have the other 200, I'm going to write if you, if this gets approved, probably tomorrow.
Right. Are they, are they the ones financing this?
No, ambush savings.
Ambush, okay. And then again, they understand that they have, they have no secured interest in this property?
No, no, it's definitely just, the agreement is, we're, it'll be paid for before the field is finished. So, and, and then, and it's, it's having the township, it's all there and that is in the, uh, the agreement.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate, appreciate.
No problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. Any further comments or questions for members of the board? Okay. Um, so we have, um, expressed sentiment, but not yet a formal motion, uh, to move this forward to the February meeting of the full board for consideration. So I will entertain any motions on the floor.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Sorry, I'll make.
Go, go ahead. Might as well do it explicitly.
Right. I'll make a motion to move this application forward to the full board, uh, for the February agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye. Not opposed.
No, I heard aye, sorry. I pulled the trigger a little quickly. Uh, and any opposed? Okay. Hearing none, uh, this matter will go forward to the full board for final consideration at the February board meeting. Thank you, Mr. Manchester and, and thank you, thanks to your colleagues.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You as well. Uh, with that, uh, that is the final agenda item for this evening, so we are duly adjourned. Uh, thank you all for your time and attention this evening. Be well.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.
Good night.